Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, it's time to act. We've heard, we've listened, we have requested feedback and input. And so now is time for council through their vote to make what I consider to be a once in a century decision.
Yes.
City manager, as we discussed at our last meeting, has put forth three resolutions that I'm going to ask him to summarize. And then we're going to vote. This will give him the strategic decision, the strategic knowledge that he needs to be able to move forward down a particular door, which will create more decision points for council. So please, whatever is chosen, do not think this is it because all of them not only have financial implications, but also have land use implications that will have to be decided by this council. But I will not allow the clock to run out, as has happened before, because we are paralyzed in our analysis of a decision. In the end, nothing gets done. Mr. Manager, what are our options?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number 50, Resolution 1, represents the renovation of the entire Civic Center site as we know it, including the arena, theater, community meeting rooms, and ballroom. Number 51, or Resolution 2, would represent the demolition of the entire Civic Center site, including the arena, the theater, the ballroom, and community rooms, and to replace the theater, ballroom, and community rooms at an alternative location. Number 52, Resolution 3, which we've presented as the hybrid plan, is the removal of the arena and the renovation of the Johnny Mercer Theater, the ballrooms, and the community meeting rooms. I would like to read the therefore language that is included in each of the three resolutions, save for the specific direction of which door council would like to walk through on this project. Now, therefore be it resolved, the mayor and alderman of the city of Savannah, Georgia, adopt this resolution and direct the city manager to prepare and execute a plan inclusive of robust community engagement and the required council approval on annual or amended budgets, project financing, zoning, contracts, and agreements. That does the following: achieves an equitable approach to redevelopment of the area; retains the name and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.; restores as much of the Oglethorpe Plan as feasible; prioritizes housing, including affordable and workforce housing; prohibits the developments of new hotels and restricts the use of short-term vacation rentals; optimizes space for public and municipal use, as well as appropriate retail and commercial spaces; and achieves future parking needs. That therefore language, as I read, is included in each of the three resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm referencing item number 51, and the language is there, "at an alternative location." Do we have an alternative location?
No, sir, not one that's identified.
We have not identified alternative locations. So it will be something in the future somewhere.
Yes, sir, that would be a future decision.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure? And let me tell you how we're going to do this. There are three items because there are three separate resolutions. We can vote on all three, but the first one that receives the majority vote of council is the one that we're going to go with. So.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I offer my input to, as the district alderman of the second district, and if I can have a little leeway, sir?
Yes, sir.
That after much thought, I was one of the people who fought to say, "Don't put granddaddy in the backseat." But I wanted to make sure that we understood what our decision meant and what it meant for the entire community and for the historical significance of our community, from staff reports, community inputs. I make a motion that we adopt Resolution number 3 that will take down the Martin Luther King Arena in its current state and preserve the Johnny Mercer Theater and when all the upgrades that are written.
Second.
Second.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager, you just said that number 51, that recommended the removal of the entire facility, but with the plan to bring back or to replace the theater, the ballroom, and the community meeting rooms. And you just said that this was an option, but there had been no place identified for these replacements.
That's correct. We would, if that was the choice of council, we would have to identify a location for a new theater.
And so in this choice, in this resolution, we considered replacing those three facilities, but we did not consider any type of replacement for the MLK Arena. And when I say that, not just the name, but the need in the community for that type of space. So do we have any type of contingency to replace that need?
My thought on that, and as I've shared with some members of council, is there is a use and a need that the Martin Luther King Arena provided for the community that is not being currently replicated at the In-Market Arena. And we think of events like the Black Heritage Festival, back-to-school events, some of our mid-sized concerts and shows that are not fit for a proscenium theater. I think in any, in the options that would, specifically option number 3, which would restore seven blocks of the original plan and save the Johnny Mercer Theater, I think there is ample room, and even in the budget presentations that we discussed about a, what we termed as an infill development on the Oglethorpe-facing piece of land in front of the Johnny Mercer, or behind the Johnny Mercer, if you would see it, on the Oglethorpe side. There is space to build a purpose-built building that could service those needs. And that would have to be a decision and a plan that council would make after moving through, you know, what's the concept plan. But I do think that there's ample space and opportunity to replace that community need in a way that could serve those needs better than renovating the current Martin Luther King Arena, which has passed its useful life and certainly has been neglected for maintenance for many, many years following the decision of the city to build a brand-new state-of-the-art arena. So I do believe that there is room in those options to be able to replace that need. And I think that that was one of the uses that is certainly available to us, either on one of the tithing blocks that would be, I'm sorry, on one of the trust lots that would be restored, or in that Oglethorpe frontage space that would be essentially a new wrap to the Johnny Mercer Theater building.
That's good to know that we have those options, but we did not include that here. We specifically addressed the theater, the ballroom, and the community meeting rooms, but we did not include that. And so often, in some of these proceedings, we have something pertinent like this that we need to deal with, and we say, "Well, we'll come back later and deal with it," and it doesn't happen, like what happened with the ADUs. "Okay, let's just pass it now, we'll come back later and deal with it." And later, it doesn't get dealt with. I would have liked to have had that as an option, or to consider that use, because in dealing with this issue for the last 10 years, there was a portion of the community that advocated for that use in particular, and it was so easy for us to throw that away. And all three of these options, we know, well, in one, we will keep it for renovation. And we probably know that's not the most expedient thing to do for us. But in the options to raise the whole entire facility, we're saying that we can do that, and we'll bring back these three uses, but we didn't consider the MLK. And in the third one, we are saying that we'll remove the MLK, but there's no plan for that use to come back somewhere else. We didn't deal with that issue of those many people who were concerned about the MLK and the use there and that needed community space. So we left that dangling out there, like, "Oh, we'll come back at some point and deal with that." So that is my concern at this point. There was a large portion of the community concerned about the theater. I think we addressed that in this option. About the ballroom, we addressed that. But for that part of the community that was concerned about the MLK Arena and its needed, as a needed space and a needed use in the community, we did not adequately deal with those people and their concern for what we would do. We're leaving it for speculation, or that we might come back at some point and make a decision about it.
All the women, I think this is a part of what we'll call sequential thinking. One must go before two. In this case, this was just the first decision point. From whatever decision the council makes today, there has to be extensive land use planning opportunity that the city manager will come back to us to be able to determine what are the functions that will be represented on the new configuration. The problem was before, is right now, he had three different areas that we were asking him to juggle options all the way. So his direction before was to come up with three or more distinct directions. We would pick one, and then from there, staff would develop that. So.
The last thing I want to say on this issue.
One second. So the three options deal with the existing facilities now: the arena, the theater, the ballroom, the meeting rooms. Those are the existing spaces. For the arena, it was clear when we built the In-Market, and what we represented to voters that approved it in two successive SPOLOs referendums, was that the arena had outlived its useful life, and we were building the new arena because the old arena was not feasible. And so now, once we give the direction to the manager about which direction to go on dealing with what is there now, then he'll be coming to us for visioning about what would go there going forward. So I don't think that's been left out. I think we all agree, and I certainly agree, that there has to be community space right now that is not being offered anywhere, because even the arena right now, at this point, is not a viable space to have events.
Just one last comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I was telling the city manager earlier, I think the MLK Arena was allowed to fall into dish repair based on the mismanagement of it. I even shared with him, back in 1973, my first concert was the Jackson Five at Savannah Civic Center. And through the years, how so many people have enjoyed the MLK Arena in Savannah, and it doesn't service the same, probably, population that would try to get the In-Market Arena.
Correct.
So it's a different set of marketing, or different market, I would say, for each facility. Now, in looking at Resolution number 3 that we just have, we're about to vote on, this was the first option that was brought to us years ago. And a lot of people said in the proceedings, "Oh, while we're doing all of this, they're just going to do what they want to do anyway. They're just going to go along with what they already have presented anyway." I kept hearing that over and over. "Why are we coming to all of these meetings, why are we convening all of these citizens and getting them to spend this precious time that they'll never get back, and we're just going to go with what the city wants and what was recommended in the beginning?" And that's what we're doing here today. So those people, we've proven them right, that it was just an act for us to appear as if we were going to make some adjustments, because we invited all these people to the table all over the city, and people gave up their precious times, and we're still going along with what was on the table from day one. So, sorry.
Well, all the women, I honestly and respectfully disagree with you. As a matter of fact.
We always do.
Yeah, it is. But in 2019, there was a much different option on the table.
Exactly.
And it was a much different option on the table. And that clock ran out. The individuals sitting here now are different than the individuals that sat here in 2019. So if the city was going to do what the city was going to do, then that option was much different in 2019. We said public engagement, we said public engagement. You have nine individual people. When you say the city, we're all, we have different mindsets, we have different thought patterns, we have different ways we consider things. And so obviously, it was for these nine individuals to be convinced one way or another. It's not our responsibility for people to be, you know, I can't deal with conspiracy theorists. We know we put the time in, we put the money in, we hired a consultant, and we listened. The clerk can tell you, we received input from everywhere. My office can tell you, we received input from everywhere. There's been a lot of time devoted for this. Ultimately, it's how these nine people vote. And so those who want to field this conspiracy, I think life is always about folks that have conspiracy. I do know that my conversation with the city manager is that I want this to be a real and thorough process. I think he's delivered us just that. And where the chips fall is where the chips fall. But it is time for us to move. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I call the question.
Second.
Okay. Been called question.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You missed me.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to all the women, Lanier, and to your statement. Three of us on this council today were on that council in 2019, when we voted for something somewhat different from what we are about to vote on today. And that was the recommendation from ULI, which was to tear down all three, demolish all three. Well, demolish this arena, the theater, and completely raise buildings and relocate somewhere else, or rebuild somewhere else. But we did not identify that somewhere else. Now, four years have passed, and as the mayor alluded to the fact that it was 2019, the end of that particular administration. Four years, four and a half years have passed, and personally, I can't speak for the mayor and the mayor pro tem, but I can say that I've changed my mind. Certainly, I've looked at the input and the comments by citizens, but I also have looked at the numbers, and we look at the, when we look at the cost of tearing down the arena and the theater and purchasing land somewhere else to rebuild, it's astronomical. And plus, there's no identification, so it's just a big question mark. And that doesn't even address what's going to happen with the vacant, with the land that remains when we tear down the structures. The thing that appealed to me most was the numbers, as I said. When I looked at the cost for each of the options, and I also looked at the fact that we cannot save the MLK Arena without an exorbitant. In fact, I almost thought about asking the manager to read the, but it's on public record. So if you want to know the cost of each of the options, you can look at that. But the thing that seemed significant to me was that it was after analyzing how much it would cost, or the cost for renovating versus demolishing the theater, after the comparisons with what Charleston has done, after the study by, who was the consultant?
Acoustics.
Yeah, the acoustic study, yeah. After all that, it seemed reasonable and it seemed cost-effective to save the theater. But it also seemed practical to rebuild a facility that would accommodate the medium size of the events in our community, such as Black Heritage Festival, such as back-to-school, such as some of the festivals and so forth that happen in this community, where we don't have a building to accommodate those kinds of affairs. And the arena, the In-Market Arena, is just too large. It's just not suitable for those kinds of community affairs. So I like the idea of building a purpose-built facility. Is that what you call it?
Yes, ma'am.
For those specific kinds of events. And in response to all the women, Lanier, I hear you, and I agree with you, and I think people would be suspicious, "Well, will it really happen?" Hold us accountable. It's the beginning of this administration, not the end. So hold us accountable, and make sure that we do what we claim we are going to do.
You've called the question already. The question has been called. All in favor of Resolution number 3, removal of the arena and renovation of the theater, ballroom, and community meeting rooms? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Oppose.
Motion passes seven to one.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager, do not sit on this. Yes, ma'am.
Let me make a comment. I was one of those persons who was in that administration in 2019, and, you know, the mayor and I, we were, you know, we were rocking and rolling together like we are now back then. But we knew that in order for us to get something done, and as the mayor has stated in this administration, we're going to get it done. And that's what we're doing on today. I just want to also state that I did a little bit more work when the city manager brought it forward. I went back to my district, and some of my colleagues.
That's right.
Mentioned that, "Listen, we need to micro, take a micro..."
All of that, go ahead.
Yeah, all of that, yeah. And look a little deeper into the decision that we're going to make, and we did. So we went back, we went back on the street and to talk with our constituents throughout the city of Savannah, to get another, listen to their ears on what they want us to do. And this is what we did. And I heard my constituents, my colleagues, they heard their constituents even louder. And also, I went a little deeper in the design piece, so y'all know I have to do that kind of stuff. And I did. In reference to the acoustics, the acoustics of our theater, in the original plan, when the arena was first designed and constructed, there was a separate, awesome, acoustical plan that was developed and constructed into our theater part. Though, since the time and the wear and tear of those materials, the acoustics materials have been taken out, and I am looking, I am just excited that the plan exists. The plan exists, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. All we've got to do is go back, take a look, make the adjustments, and move forward. So I'm just excited about what we've done on today, and we're going to have a beautiful, beautiful structure for all of our citizens and all of our visitors to visit. So thank you all, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I was one of the individuals that adopted the ULI plan some years ago. When you know better, you do better. When you have more information, you make different decisions. As you grow, your thinking evolves. And so for me, it's a different seat, being an alderman and now being mayor. For us, this is the equity piece that we keep talking about.
Hmm? That's right.
Creating opportunities for people to have places to enjoy within our city. This is also an opportunity for restoring portions of our Oglethorpe Plan that we have not been able to do for years, probably, I know probably, even since City Market, but to really create opportunities to restore some of our footprint. And so hopefully, everybody in here is happy and mad at the same time, because that's ultimately the goal of government. Everybody's not going to be happy, and I'm sorry if you're not. But everybody shouldn't be mad. This is an opportunity for us to really strike a very good balance between our current uses and even our future uses while honoring our historic past. And so, Mr. Manager, thank you and your team. Thank you, Sateo Sateo, the collaborative firm. I know some of y'all are in here for your work, but the work continues, and I'm telling this community now, particularly all of you who sent us all these emails and stuff, y'all going to help us raise money to renovate. Y'all are, y'all laughing, I'm serious. I'm serious. This is going to be a major, major, major undertaking, and we're not going to do it alone. And so we need, we know we have some people here that have been blessed in financial ways, and we're going to want some major commitments. And y'all need to get working on that now, because if we're going to do it, we're not going to do it half-stepping. We're going to build a world-class, renovate it into a world-class facility for 50 years, 100 years, and we're going to do that. It's going to take a lot of money, but it'll be something that our entire community can enjoy. Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to echo that, just wanted to commend city staff for one of the most robust engagement processes that I've ever seen, putting all of them, and thank all of the residents and the advocates, our performing artists, the Savannah Philharmonic, the Savannah Music Festival, Savannah Repertory Theater, and countless others getting engaged. I saw Paul Mazo that's out there, for getting engaged in this process, getting their hands dirty, right? Checking out the site for themselves. And then, don't lose that energy, because we need your help more than ever to stay engaged in this process. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wanted to say to the public that although we just decided to raise the MLK Arena without a plan to bring another facility back to match that use, and we're calling it equity up here, although we just did that, and although the mayor just said a few minutes ago, we all have our own mindset, so therefore, we'll probably be voting differently. That would make you think, there would be three choices and some differentiation in there with the three choices. But as you can see, the vote was seven to one, so we do have some lockstep, we do have some lockminds, we do have some, you know, just, we now, I guess we will make a plan or take into consideration those people who cry out in the wilderness in the city for equity. I guess now, since we did not make a recommendation or decision to deal with the MLK Arena situation, I guess those people will continue to advocate and continue to fight, because that's all they ever have to do is fight for the equity, the real equity piece. Now we have to decide how we're going to deal with providing that kind of space for those citizens that advocated to deal with the MLK Arena issue prior to in making this decision, which we did not.
Well, that's called planning, and that's what the city manager now will go for, down to he has a direction to come back and do. The reality is, even for those crying out, as you said, the Martin Luther King Arena right now is not usable, it has no heat, it's 10,000 degrees in there, the roof is falling down. I mean, that's not equitable. People, people in this city deserve to have spaces that are usable.
Somebody should get higher.
When this building was built in the 70s, there was no ADA, there was no lead, and there are a variety of issues with that building. You cannot even get to the floors because it has no elevator. This is an opportunity for us to be able to lead and build with planning in mind and planning for future generations. And so now, the manager has his direction, and I insist that this council is indeed interested in equity. But again, in sequential thinking, you don't plan before, you don't include things before you know what you're going to do with the facility that you have. Now he has some direction about what to do with the current facilities, and then we can start planning for what we do for future facilities. Alderman, leg it, and then we're moving on.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finally, I just wanted to recognize the fact that we do have multiple second district presidents here, and we lockstep went through the community, and we put surveys out of our... and we put surveys out of our own. And we wanted to make sure that each member of different communities had some input, so that when we made this decision on today, it wasn't favorable for everybody, but we are gonna support what city council is gonna do. We wanted to make sure that the entire Second District, even though the, the arena itself lives in the Second District, we wanted to make sure that the community had a, a good input. I had the opportunity to go to each and every one of those visioning sessions to be able to talk and engage people where they were. And as the alderman of the Second District, sir, it, it, sometimes it get emotional for you because we've done a lot in that arena. So I thank you guys, and I thank the public. I thank our presidents for allowing us to, to serve and do it the right way as a community. So we did it all as a community, and now we're making this vote with the backing of our community.
Thank you. And Alderman Leggett, I want to thank you also for your leadership. I do know that you put in a lot of time and effort in this personally. So thank you, sir, for that. Mr. Manager, you have your marching orders. Let's march.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question?
Yes, all right. Yes, ma'am.
When is it appropriate for us to start talking about a replacement for the, our MLK Arena?
That's what the city manager's marching orders are going to do. He's going to come back to us, and we're saying, what, ninety, a hundred twenty days?
Yes, sir. We'll put out an RFI and track that out. And I think that we've had enough conversation with council and enough conversation with the community to know what uses that we need to be able to provide a purpose-built facility for. And so we'll be including that in our RFI to be able to get some information back, so I can share with council what all of our options are for that, too, going forward, as well as what options we have for housing and what options we have for parking, and what options we have for restoring the plan, and what options there are, what the, what the new theater is gonna, new renovated theater is gonna look like. So I'll, I'll take that piece and that use, and we'll move forward as that is a part of the RFI process as we start to build out an implementational, a plan that we can execute and implement and fund.
And our, our file leads to RFP?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
So I'm not as much concerned about what we voted on today as much as I am that this dangling that Alderman Lanier has talked about. I want the public to recognize or to realize that, yes, we as a council are concerned about the, you know, the destruction or demolishing MLK Arena, and we also have our plans set, or we're making some plans, even if we're not funding it right at this minute, but we're making some plans to replace that purpose, not the big structure that's there now, but a purpose-built facility to accommodate those needs.
Yes, ma'am. And I think it's really important for the community to know, as I know you know, that, you know, this, this first decision is very important to get to the next 150 that will come, about all of the steps that we'll need to take on the, this civic center redevelopment plan. There, there are, are really, really dozens and dozens more steps and decisions that this council will have to make as we continue to build and execute a plan that achieves the concept of retaining and restoring the Johnny Mercer Theater, the ballroom spaces, the meeting spaces, and restoring the rest of the civic center site to match that of the Oglethorpe plan, and to include the uses that we know are important for our community, including a, a community expo space that might be purpose-built, housing, neighborhood commercial and retail establishments as well.
And as the mayor has stated, and the acronyms that have been used in reference to an RFI, which is Request for Information, a Request for Proposal, Request for Qualifications, all of those procedures have timelines according to our procurement laws in the city of Savannah. So therefore, as the mayor has stated, with those laws already on our books, we're just gonna keep it moving, and keep it moving, and keep it moving, and don't stop until we get to a product. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The clock will not run out in this administration.
That's right.
All right. Thank you, all. The citizens that came here, I know y'all stayed for zoning hearings and everything, so feel welcome to stay. We would love to have you to stay. Paul, you can stay here if you want, and amp my mic up a little bit. But thank you all for your interest. This is not over for us. It's not over for us. It's not over, so.
Have a good weekend.